Or if we have any plans to utilize their space or what their plans are. So maybe just talk through that a little bit. Hand it over to Sarah at this point, though.
Hi, everybody. Apologies for being late from my other meeting. Um, I, I mean, I think that you covered a lot of that. Fine, we're also to throw in another consideration, building, which you may have mentioned, the manager and HR staff space. But another one that we need to keep in mind is any potential for creating some of those like holding cells as well, which will take away some office space potentially. And we'll need, we'll need to put folks in different, in other spaces. I think right now, for me, the additional people, you know, at one point, we had talked to Patrick about having, I think, finance or Christine or somebody sitting at one of the empty two desks in his office, which would be really helpful to be flexible and allow for something like that to happen. If Crystal and Tara's offices are at all usable, as they kind of are behind the doors or the walls that we might build or are trying to build for the sheriffs and the jail, then we'd have to have a space for them, which potentially could be the current rec office if the recreation moved out to the pool space. So I think it's just move around the puzzle pieces.
Yeah, and one, this is Jeff, and one other puzzle piece to put in the mix is the current BOCC room. If we are realizing that we just need to have a bigger space for in-person meetings or what? Before getting on to what the knock-on effects are, I mean, that space could be, you know, a large shared, a shared office. I haven't checked the square footage, but you know, it could, it could be like the county manager and an admin person. It could be like a floating desk space for us. You know, if we've freed up our offices, you know, or it could still be present in the building when we're between meetings. I don't, that's another room that I think is underutilized.
Yeah. So Amber, do you have plans to move to the pool or is that preferred for you? Or what would you, what would be your, I know that you were going to bring to us a proposal for reallocating the, the pool budget and that it may include some renovations for the office space down at the pool. But would that be an okay location for recreation to go then? Like, could you imagine that as like the recreation hub, if you will, or you know what, what we had also talked about was potentially giving them a location at Huckfin Park with a, with a structure? I don't know if that's something we could plan to budget for in 2022. So just some, some thoughts there, but I just would like to hear from Amber what she thinks might be the best right now.
Yeah, thanks, Kayla. I think my staff are open to moving. I think what we're all concerned about is that we're going to end up in a space that's less than ideal by fitting into like an existing space, like the pool offices. So I think it could work, but I don't think I have a good enough grasp on what kind of costs we're looking at to modify that to be an appropriate space for us. And I think, you know, that is probably a really great space for us to be in terms of like being accessible to parents. But there are some problems with the water and the heat over there. And I just don't know, like, long-term, if we stay in that space, if we're going to end up paying more to like continue to make repairs to that building, then it will be worth, but that's a conversation we can have. And then I think if we're talking about moving to the Huckfin space, that's probably a more, that's probably a larger cost, but could also be really ideal from the perspective of managing the ice skating rink in the winter. And I would say in general, just keeping an, an eye on that park space. We have a lot of problems happening at the skate park. And so I think either space would probably make us more accessible to the community. But again, just wanting to be super careful about, you know, we're flexible and we're willing to relocate, but we don't want to get shoved in some space just because it's the only place for us to go. And so want to make sure it's a good working space for staff.
What are your thoughts on that, Sarah?
Um, I think, I mean, I'm, I don't know. Those are all reasonable things to consider. And, and I think we were responding to a request from Amber to move into that space. And I know Amber's talked to Chris a little bit, but you know, she has other questions too on what is the limited office space and what are the costs? And, and all those probably factor into decisions. Did we talk about, I mean, I know Amber's mentioned the, the goal space down at Huckfin, but I don't, I don't know. I think when we last like crossed that idea, Amber, we were wondering if that was too small and the water's been disconnected from that space. And, you know, yeah, and just a number of different issues and, and updates for any of the spaces.
Yeah, Sarah, I think that space is also problematic and would probably cost more in the long run than the Aquatic Center space. I think, I mean, realistically, it's probably not big enough to office three people plus have, you know, storage and supplies and those types of things. So I think that's probably something where we'd be looking at like taking that down and putting like a modular or something there like some, so that's, I think, like from a cost perspective, probably replacing that with something newer would be the only way to really make that work.
I mean, I've also said that I don't, I don't know that we want to like manage another big project at the moment. And I know that's not big compared to, you know, some of the other, the fire station or justice center, but it's just something to consider actually jugging, juggling project management of, of developing something like that, but. Are we trying to make a decision on where we, I mean, what, I think we need more estimates, more info or what, what are the, you know, Jeff and Kayla?
Well, I think we have a couple pressing matters, at least initially right in front of us, right? Which is like um, space for a manager and HR staff. We know that that has to happen. So I think we need to, like, that needs to happen quick, sooner rather than later. And then I think we need to decide or determine what we feel like we want to do if we want to have some more of those hybrid meetings, continue meetings on Zoom, offer an in-person option, because that might tell us what we do with our BOCC meeting room. Or if we need to look at an additional space, like maybe, maybe we even look at, look at City Hall or to use their space because it's a pretty decent sized space. So maybe we look at that. And then, and then figure out where to put those staff first. And then I think that will tell us what we may, might have remaining to accommodate other staff. I know that Miguel is looking for an answer sooner than later, but I am unsure of what the explicit request is. It's just for space. And so I think we might need to understand what it is he's explicitly asking for, for us to figure out how we accommodate him going forward, but I'm unsure of what that is. I don't know if Jeff or Sarah, if you have an idea of what the explicit ask is.
No, my best understanding is just a, a desk for a person, which, you know, I think we have an option in the treasurer's office. But.
Yeah, just, I don't have a clear idea because I think I've heard different things. Because I thought at one point it was a desire for a more confidential meeting room for Miguel to work out of, you know, especially as sort of protests over assessments come in. But I, yeah, so that sounds, Kayla, I liked how you were really to lay things out in terms of the sort of first priority moving pieces to figure out, but getting a clear sense from Miguel, maybe we need to offer, offer the invite to actually like walk around his current space and see where staff are sitting and sort of see, see, see what's needed.
Yeah. Chris, is, is there a limit on what we need to do to accommodate? Because, you know, I, I know that he has told us we have a statutory obligation to provide space, but is there, is that X amount of square feet or anything specific?
Not, not that I'm aware of, not to that specificity, but I, I definitely take a look and see if there's anything in particular. To me, it would be just space adequate to perform the services of the elected office. And so I, I'm having reviewed this information, I'm not aware of anything that specifies that, for example, an elected off, officer is supposed to have a private office or anything to that effect. I think it's, it's limited to, you know, what's needed to perform the office's services, but I'll check to make sure.
Well, the other thing too is to, you know, fold in the mix of encouraging folks and if, you know, creating better IT. So if any, any of staff from any departments can alternate working remotely or whatnot, if there's a space issue, I mean, let's not forget about that as well. I'm, I am totally happy to like combine, I mean, in my opinion, the BOCC room is not adequate for holding meetings anymore and it should be reutilized or repurposed for office space. And I am not married to what that might look like, whether that one is a shared space between the three of us as commissioners or, and all of our offices are then open for HR and county manager staff. I think all of that makes sense.
Yeah, I think we've had some significant, you know, requests for us to have some physical presence inside the building, which I'm not opposed to. I just don't know that it's efficient for all three of us to have a private office space where we might be able to split and schedule an office space in the BOCC room and have three desks in there because it's the biggest space that we have that can accommodate three people. And if we need to, maybe we can put up some dividers in there, like cubicle dividers or whatever, like they have in, used to have in DHS, if we needed to divide that up into three equal spaces even, but I think it seems to make the most sense for the three of us to vacate our offices and make space for that administrative staff here on the first level of the courthouse. Because likely they would be, they would be the first stop for a lot of information.
This is, Chris, the only thing I would mention in terms of putting y'all all three into the same space, even with partitions, my concern would be whether it may be construed as having continuous public meetings or meetings that, that would be subject to public notice type of thing. So I think that might be one reason why y'all currently have separate office space, even though they're conjoined with, with doors and stuff. That would be my concern with, with just putting three desks in the BOCC room and if y'all were to be all in there at the same time, that would be a concern.
Would be, Chris, would it be appropriate then for us to maybe like schedule out blocks of time for each of us to utilize that space? Like, one person has it Monday, nine to 12, another person has it Tuesday, nine to 12, like alternate those days or something like that? Because to, to be able to schedule those appointment times with constituents that might want to come in and see us?
I think that's definitely a possibility, given recent concerns have been expressed about y'all not being in your offices, that that might be part of the backlash you, you might get from that. But I think if you have posted office hours, that would certainly lend an explanation.
I think there'd be other, sorry, just throwing in the chat there, there's other, there's other space also to coordinate meetings in.
Yeah, the only thing I would say right now with the courtroom, trial room, that, that type of thing, with the backlog they're dealing with and the fact that they only have one room, that, that might not be the most viable option right now.
Yeah, it's, it's not ideal, I don't think.
Okay. Jeff, what are you, what do you think about administrative staff offices and us sharing that, that BOCC room office? Or, or one of these office spaces? Or I don't, I, I'm open to basically anything at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm thinking, I mean, so we have the HR director or manager office down at the end of the hallway. And that is already set up with some space for confidential files. So it seems that, to me, it seems like keeping that as it is makes sense and not having to like re-find a new, a new place. Other than, I mean, we only are adding one admin sort of, you know, admin technician level in finance for that accounts payable position. I don't think there's another admin person coming in. So I think, I mean, the, the new slots are the county manager and one admin. Just trying to get my head around like what we need. So I mean, even and potentially freeing up, like if we, if we gave up two of the commissioners' offices and sort of kept one as kind of like a floating place for, you know, constituent meetings or more sensitive phone calls or noisy phone calls or whatever. And then, you know, as we're in, as the commissioners are in, we could float in, I mean, I can work from a laptop like on, on the desk that's in the BOCC room. Although some cubicles would be probably better.
I, this is Chris, I, I think the notion that Commissioner Feeler's talking about the perhaps making the front BOCC room, the BOCC workroom perhaps, and then saving at least one private office for y'all to be able to have sensitive, you know, meetings and conversations, that type of thing. I, I think that might be a potential option. And then if you post, you know, hours on the workroom, if you will, when, when y'all plan to be there, that type of thing. That way, if, if a constituent needs to, to meet with one of y'all during an hour you're not normally scheduled to be there, then the private office may be available.
Okay. So Sarah and Jeff, what do you think is our next next line here in order to facilitate some of this change?
Well, I think I'm, Kayla, you laid out, I think figuring out like a concrete plan for rec. You know, where, where that go like, so I think exploring like a real cost and design option for going to the pool area or I'm actually not sure what other options there are on the table at this point. Or, I mean, I guess the modular, but I thought I'd heard that. I mean, I thought that was kind of expensive and to actually do something semi-permanent is actually kind of a big deal. I mean, you need water and sewer, probably permitting, but I guess, I mean, worth exploring. But, but I think, I think figuring that out, because then that also would potentially free up space. Unless I'm missing something, I mean, there'd be some free space in the current rec offices, right?
Yeah, I think that would free up the, the space in the rec offices. And then we could, because I think Sarah was talking about wanting to vacate the offices by the sheriff's office that by dispatch, potentially. Then we could ideally, yeah, then we could ideally put finance in the recreation office space. And then we would really just need to, I, I think the HR office is big enough that it could be a shared space between an HR technician and an HR manager. And if there was an issue that became a confidential personnel issue where it needed to be used, utilized by an HR manager themselves, you know, they could, they could figure out the scheduling conflict with their staff. So staff could work remotely or in another space. And then we would just need to figure out a space for the manager, which could then really be the BOCC room, I guess, if we wanted that to work that way. But finance could, could, could fit in the recreation space, definitely. So I think, I think if we just need to go through the process of working with Amber to see what needs to happen at the pool, if that sounds like the best, if that sounds like the best option at this point, then I'd say that that would be our next step is to look at what upgrades need to be done at the pool, how long those upgrades will take and figure out how to get that done.
Are there any, just, no, sorry, excuse me, any other options for rec? And I'm wondering if even, I mean, given sort of close ties to, or the, the point that Amber made about wanting to be accessible to parents to signups and stuff, I mean, I wonder if the school district has space. I mean, I feel like they're busting at the seams too. But maybe with some of the shifts around things happening at Pitts and with the center, there, I'm, maybe there's space in Pitts?
I have no idea.
I don't, I, I know that we had, the Bright Start Board had asked Pitts to potentially extend a lease for them on the current preschool side. And it sounds like Cloud City High School will also be utilizing some of that space. And then there's space on the other side that is utilized by Get Outdoors Leadville for their childcare license. But I don't know if that's something that like Get Outdoors Leadville could move to their gear library or what that looks like either. Amber, have you had any, any conversation with the school district? Or do you know if there's any space at the school district that might be able to partner with you guys? Okay. I guess that would be, that would be also another option for us to explore. I'll put that in my notes too.
It seems like the, it seems like the a rec move might not be permanent, but the timing is necessary for some of the jail and SO and other office needs.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so if we were to look at places that we could put them, it wouldn't be for a permanent.
It might not be, unless the pool worked out great. But I think we're going to have to deal with finding a temporary space so that we can get everybody else up and running also and functioning appropriately. And if, and if you know, something like a modular at Huckfin is, is more ideal, that's still a project that needs to be planned for.
Folks, this is Chris. I just wanted to note, I, I posted in the chat, the statutory provision regarding the assessor's office. And it just says that they shall be provided with a suitable room. A suitable room. It doesn't say anything more specific than that.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Um, let's see here. So Sarah, would, would a modular space not be something that you would anticipate us being able to undertake in 2022 budget year either?
Um, well, I see Michael jumped on here as far as cost-wise or timing or?
Both, both timing and cost-wise.
I, I mean, if that, if that would be like a permanent living space for recreation and the ideal, I, I certainly think we could talk about that, but Michael might help us with the timeline there as far as the last two
Sure.
projects at the landfill and the
Yeah, Michael, could you talk us through a little bit like of sort of the timeline of what that, what that looks like and the cost for that?
I didn't hear what the question was, so you got to help me out here.
Sure. So if we, if we were to look to permanently relocate the recreation staff into a modular down at the Huckfin location, so you know where the little shack is that we used to, used to be the ice rink warming hut? The green shed building? If we were to remove that building and put a small modular there for office space for the recreation staff, can you walk us through kind of what, what those logistics would, would be? Or what we could expect?
Nine months to a year, because you got to do all the foundation work and everything, building permits, modular, unless we buy it already constructed, constructed, we have to wait till they construct it to move it on site. Could be anywhere from three to six months for that. And then just being ready for it when it gets here and getting everything set, because they will make all the modifications or, you know, put it together when it gets here. Both the Public Works Office and the, the new building at the landfill took at least that much time.
Okay, so do you think, I think that that's a much smaller scale project than, than like the southern fire station? Is that something that you think that we would be capable of doing in 2022?
Yeah, probably. You know, like the, the building at the landfill is a stick built, so they built it onsite. Might have taken a little bit longer, but yeah, I think 2022 would be a good year for that.
Okay. Sarah and Jeff, what are your thoughts on that?
Sarah and Jeff, what are your thoughts on that?
Sorry, I feel like I lost out there on that a little bit, and so would. Is this in terms of going through the steps to cite some kind of modular office space? Like a. Annex somewhere?
Yeah, so I think what we, what we would anticipate doing is. Is maybe working through some of the planning phases right now, currently in 2021 to prepare to budget for it to happen in 2022.
Yeah. And one, one, I, I'd heard very different estimates of what. Some of those like module office spaces. Cost in terms of either leasing or owning, so I feel like, I mean. Yeah, I mean, I think that definitely agree that going through some of the planning, but maybe doing that just sort of first. First rough estimate, I mean, I've heard everything from sort of like tens of thousands to hundreds of thousands and just. Need to think through whether. I mean, given the office need over the last, or over the next few years and potential transitions, maybe that's just. Worth it necessary for us to have. One or two of those full office spaces that we actually own. And then resell. So, so anyway, I, I, I definitely think that's worth looking into, it does feel like we're just. We're just. Busting at the seams everywhere and with some of their, you know, small and potentially large renovations and retrofits that we're gonna need some. Some ways to move things around.
Yeah, I think. I think that might be a really great place for us to start anyway. You know, in, in having some preliminary conversations with Amber, it sounds like. That might be an ideal fit for recreation long term, because that seems to be a hub of a lot of recreational amenities. In that location and it's. It's very well known and accessible and it may cut down on some of the issues that we see with. With. Activities happening in those. Recreation facilities like the skate park and that type of thing. Might provide a little bit better safeguard to the users of those. Facilities. But I think, is that, Sarah, is that something that, that we can work with, with maybe Michael and Amber on? Getting a ballpark estimate on. For 2022 and then plan on, on going that route and then. Could we temporarily move recreation to the pool area until that's completed so that we can make some of these other logic? Logistical changes internally?
Sorry, a mate is here helping me with something, so I haven't really been listening, I will just say. We can't move into the pool as is, it's not feasible, so. I think. Yeah, we, we have to spend some money on that space if we're gonna move in there, even if it's temporary, it's just not workable as office space in its current state.
I, I love the idea of having a hub down at Huck Finn, especially for. The accessibility and the programming and the oversight of having staff down there. I think like Amber said, it's, we still need an interim move. And if we're gonna invest in that anyway. I mean, my just personal opinion is not to throw in another project that we have to manage through. Like so many other of the, of these big. Construction. Or capital improvement projects at the moment or in the next two years. But. I can, I can get on board if that's the. The desire of the board.
Now Kayla, um, excuse me for interrupting if I did. Were you talking about a temporary like office facility? Or something that's temporary that could be made. Permanent in the long run, because if we, if we talk about demoing the building that's there, we got some expenses with that too, not only. Just demoing it and hauling it off, but it would. I think require at least an asbestos infection, because I don't think that building was infected. And I'm not sure.
Okay, I, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, Michael. And I think. I think maybe. If it's gonna be an issue with asbestos to demo that, I think if we could use that as like cold, dry storage. Which is what it's currently being used for, I wouldn't see an issue with leaving it there and then building next to it. But I do think in terms of like long term, I'd like to look for something that's a permanent solution for office space down there. And maybe it wouldn't be something that we could only limit to recreation, I don't know if there's additional. Staff. That may not be as public facing, that might be able to go into that location, I'm not, I'm not sure, but. I would think something somewhat permanent, maybe not quite as big as, as the modular. That you guys have at Public Works, but. Something in a similar fashion is what I would envision.
Right, yeah, I was just wondering if you, you know, you were talking maybe a temporary, like construction office type building or. You know, something that could be more permanent.
Do you, Michael, do you know how much that might cost to? A temporary. Construction office?
Could be like, you know, a couple thousand dollars a month. In rental, but that all could go towards the purchase price of that same facility. That could be made permanent.
Okay. So. That would be an option for us too then, and I would be, I mean, if that, if that's something that we wanna, wanna also do, I'm good, I'm good with that too, if we wanna check and see. What that would cost to put something temporary and then. Make it permanent, I, I think that would be fine.
Yeah, kind of like. That option, sounds like it would mirror timing needs right now and also our capacity to. You know, build, actually build something or not.
Yeah.
I mean, pretty much the only difference between our building up here at public works, it's a modular building also. And a temporary building is. You know, the tire, tires and stuff get left on it like a trailer. But it could be, you know, even set up permanent like that, I'm not sure what the building requirements are, but. They do that all over the place. I don't know if they do it like.
Okay. So there's. So then there's not. Anything further, well, I guess we'd have to, we, we would have to pay for things like the tap fees and stuff, right, Michael?
Right, but I, I think Amber can talk more to this too, but there is already a tap. That the county pays for at that part, it's more up by the skate park, but it could obviously be brought down there. Or moved down there. And there's a sewer line right there that runs across the parking lot that we found out. A couple of years ago. So everything's close right there, it's, you know, it's all good. And everything could be made to work either in a permanent trailer or permanent structure or a, you know. Mobile structure.
Okay. So. Would you be able to help us locate a temporary? Structure that could turn into a permanent structure down there?
Sure.
Okay. Sarah and Jeff, what do you guys think about that?
I'd like to see the cost and the options there, is that be good?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Um.
Cool, okay, and then. So if we can get rec moved then, so that would be the first piece then, we'll need to figure out the recreation move and then we can figure out from there the rest of the internal logistics, yeah?
I think so, yeah, I don't think anyone would be as involved.
Okay.
In shifting office space within the courthouse.
Okay. I don't think. Go ahead.
The net, the next, the net, well, the next. The next more involved, which wouldn't be office based, well. Would be if, if we can come up with a solution for. Holding cells. Using some of those office spaces, but by that time we'll have other folks moved out of there. I think.
Did you? Could you help me understand a little bit more? What the? Proposal is for the cells?
Yeah. The last conversation with the courts and the sheriff, we were talking about whether or not a few. Isolated standalone offices could be retrofitted. To have. To house someone for, you know, three to. Twenty hours. Appropriately. So that we wouldn't have to be doing those transports out of county. For like PR bonds and whatnot.
Okay.
Chris, I don't remember who was going to. Look into. The limited. Or the, the, yeah, what minimum work we would have to do or. What we'd have to compliance, we'd have to meet.
Right, Katie was gonna follow up with that after the meeting when that was discussed. Unfortunately, since I was out last week and she's out this week, I'm uncertain as to the status of that. I could follow up with Anderson Hollis to see. If she did touch base with them and if so, if they provided additional information.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So. That will work in tandem with, with looking for a temporary space then. Okay. I think that's all I've got right now for space needs and then Sarah, do you know who's hopping on with us at one o'clock for opioids?
No. I, I thought we were just having that conversation to make a final determination based on the last conversation that we all had.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure to, that we didn't have to wait for anybody to hop on with us, but I think if. If we're, if we feel comfortable with our space conversation being come to a close now, because you've got some. Deliverables that we need to. Work on going forward and then. Make a determination once we have some of those cost estimates. That, that conversation's pretty well, pretty good and then if, if we don't, don't need to wait for anybody, then I'm good to move into opioids as long as you guys are.
Yeah, let me check. I don't, I don't think anybody else, I hadn't invited anyone else specifically. I think we had just sent out to that group that we would have that conversation and if anybody else wanted to join with any new information, they could.
Yeah, that, that was my understanding is that it was sort of for the three of us to have a discussion and I guess see if there are other outstanding questions we need to. Get into before taking an actual action.
Yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm okay to move into that. Um. All right. Into the opioid conversation, I think, I mean, I, I am pretty convinced that we should be a. Part of the northern region. With the three out of those four buckets of funding to utilize and also. Allocate. As we see fit. Or the, I guess the two, the two out of the four, if we're in that region, the regional allocation is one of them. But. That's where I kind of landed. What do you guys think?
I feel pretty confident in that as well. I think it really makes the most sense to align with. The services that they're being provided in the northern region and it just feels. It feels like it could be utilized. Or leveraged, I guess you'd say. Better in that region, like almost in alignment with our judicial region. Instead of in the, the cog region.
Yeah.
I think, Jeff, do you have any?
No, I, I've been in the same direction, I mean, it did seem that, you know, both, both could work and there were reason, you know, and pretty good reasons. I also, I just wanted to say, I really appreciated the discussion we had before with all those stakeholders and folks involved in both, both the north and south. Regions we could join and really appreciate it there, you know, honest. Advice and, you know, how well they all seem to get along, so. I mean, I think in, in, in line with the reasons. You just articulated. The Sal, I'm sorry, 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 the going to the north. Makes. Slightly more sense from, from my view.
Yeah. I think it's worth keeping a close eye on though and learning more from Colleen on what our. Involvement might be or the request of Lake County might be for development of a treatment center in Salida and how far along that actually is. Cause I thought Judge James's comment about any potential for locating a treatment facility. In this. New re, or. In our, in this region, if we are with the north, with Eagle and Summit. I thought. I thought it sounded. More promising to be a bit more accessible. Even if that's not necessarily located in Lake County, but that's just kind of a side note. So it sounds like we are okay to let Heidi know that. We're okay with remaining in the northern, northern region. Okay.
Chris, is that something we need to make formal? At our meeting on Monday?
I would recommend so, just because I, I think that the question and I was trying to pull up Heidi's email requesting the information, I, I think that's something that. You probably should confirm. That the, the, since this was noticed as a work session instead of a decision-making. Meeting.
Okay.
I was also just looking to see if there was something in particular she needed. It to say or whatever. With that, but I don't see anything that's specific.
All right.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. What were you?
I was just gonna ask if there was anything else that we needed to, to consider with the opioid. Settlement.
No, I think, I think we stay where they, yeah. Where they want us.
Okay. I'll put that on our agenda then for Monday. And we can go from there. Cool, Jeff, do you have anything else right away this afternoon? With the opioid or with space logistics?
Uh, no, I think we covered everything I have in my notes.
Okay. Cool. All right, I think I booked out two hours for this, because I wasn't entirely sure how much time we might, might need, but I think if we're finished, then I think we're good to go for today.
Yeah. Cool. Very good.
All right, thanks guys.